Good evening. It's good to see so many smiling faces in the audience today. How y'all doing? All right, we're gonna start without me. Councilwoman Harris, will you give us our prayer? And then we'll get our pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just wanna thank and praise you again, oh God. You've been so good and you've been so kind. Lord, we lift you up in this meeting, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. We bless you right now, oh God. Glory to your name, oh Lord. And we thank you so much, oh God, 'cause you've been so good and you've been so kind, oh God. Lord, we lift you up, oh God. Continue and encourage our America. The mayor that you chose to run this city, oh God. Continue to encourage him and lift him up, oh God. As we go through this race, oh God, you bless him. Cover him with your blood, lift him with your love, wrap him in your mercy, oh God. Cover this place, oh God, with your Holy Spirit, oh God. Save and deliver in this place, oh God. Look on West Memphis as a whole, oh God. Bind the gun demons, oh God, in the name of Jesus. Stop the shooting, oh God. And you look on our police officer, oh God, our fire department, Lord. You bless them and keep them safe if they go through these meetings, oh God. We bless you right now, oh God, to keep our city safe, oh God. We lift you up, oh God. Cover this city with your blood, fill it with your love, wrap it in your mercy, oh God. As we look toward you, God, the oath and the finish of our faith, oh God. We give you glory this afternoon, oh God. As we go through this race, oh God. Bind every demon, oh God. Every rattlesnake, God, you suck him up like you'd Moses stick did. Do it right now, God. In your name, Jesus, we plead the blood of Jesus over every situation, oh God, to keep this city safe. Lord, we thank you right now, God. We give you glory this evening. We give you honor and we give you praise, oh God, 'cause it's in your name, oh God, that we live, we move and have our being. We bless you right now, oh God. We bless you right now, God, in Jesus' name, in Jesus' name. 'Cause in your name, oh God, we can live and move and have our being. And we thank you right now, what you're doing in this city, God. Cover the city with your blood, fill it with your love, wrap it in your mercy, oh God. Let us be the city, Lord, hallelujah, to have their love and reach out to each other, oh God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen and praise.
Remain standing and place the flag, please, for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I called this meeting to order. Mr. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Clinton.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter. City Treasurer Suter. Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Kat.
Here.
Councilmember Croon.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Mary.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Ten out of ten.
We got ten out of ten councilmembers present. We're gonna proceed with this meeting. We had no bid openings, so I'm gonna move down to the minutes. Was there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion approved and submitted.
All in paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We had no old business, we had no new business. Permission request, can I get a motion and second to add our charity day's money to the agenda?
Some of.
Second.
All in paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Kat?
Yes, Mayor, I may request the council approve a $2,000 distribution to the VFW and the balance of $451.58 to the families in transition.
What was the second balance?
Sir?
The second balance.
$451.58.
Okay. Did anyone else wanna give any of their charity money? Hearing none, can I get a motion and second to approve?
Some of.
All in paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Committee reports. Councilman Murray, utility?
Utility. We met on October the 10th, 2022. The West Memphis Utility Commission met in regular session on this date at 8:30 a.m. The first item on the agenda was approved. The approval of the minutes, September of minutes, minutes were approved. The second item on the agenda was September safety report. There were 130 days without lost time injuries, 119 days since last recordable, and zero recordable for the month of September. Third item on the agenda was personnel update. There were no new hires, one voluntary resignation for the month of September. The utility currently has nine opening positions out of 79 budgeted positions. The next item on the agenda was to approve purpose of articulating telescoping area line truck. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. The purchase of the hypochlorite articulating telescope area line truck was approved. Motion passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda was approval purchase of hydraulic rotating digger dairy, which was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. The purchase of the hydraulic rotating digger dairy was approved. Motion passed unanimously. The last item on the agenda was years of service recognition. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. He recognized one employee for their years of service at West Memphis Utility and presented them with a plaque. The one employee he recognized was Philip Lyer, 20 years. End of report.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Murray. Public Works?
Mr. Willis is gonna do the report.
Public Works Committee met on the 11th and the 1st of 22. Called to order, we approved the minutes from the October 4th, 2022 meeting. There was no old business. Reports that were given is fleet report, front end loaders, there's three operational, zero down. Rear end loaders, there's four operational, none down. One armed bandits, one operational, one down, waiting for a part. Grapple trucks, there's four operational with one down. Certified mechanic is still in need at the city shop. Public Works Director report his recycle total is 9,460 pounds. Tires were 1,433. Code enforcement report, Mr. Phillips has conducted a 13 visit, has conducted and visited 13 sites, and as a result, we've been able to collect the following amounts of privileged license, Delinquent AMP taxes with penalty, $13,400. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had no other individuals in the committee that have met, so I'm gonna move down to appointments. We have no appointments at this time. Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
Okay. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Janice Coleman for our Employee of the Year ceremony. So, would you like to come forward?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing this opportunity to recognize some wonderful employees. We have had the opportunity to present the Employee of the Year for the last, this will be the third year that we've been able to do this. This year, the Personnel Committee has decided to, and they voted upon, doing two different categories. The first category is Employee of the Year, and then the second category is Department Head of the Year or Department Leader of the Year. All too often, you know, especially with leaders, you know, we're just used to getting things done. We're used to, you know, just finding answers. And sometimes it's important to be recognized for being able to do those things for our employees. So, we felt that it was important to add that category into this year's Employee of the Year session. So, we have those two different slates that we have. So, what I will do at this time is I will start with the Employee of the Year slate. We have several different nominees. All are not here, but the ones that are here, I would ask that they would come and line up, once I call your name, to the far side of that flag over here, and then I will read just some pieces of their nomination. So, once we're done with that category, I will announce the Employee of the Year, and then we'll do the same thing with the Department Leader of the Year. So, with that being said, we'll go ahead and start. So, Ms. Debbie Holmes, she's from the Fire Department. Ms. Trishana Lark, from Human Resources Department. Ms. Patricia Roberts, from the Fire Department. Michael Lamb, from the West Memphis Utility Commission Water Department. Kamara Johnson, from the Police Department. Jason Kennedy, from the Police Department. Maria Adams, West Memphis Utility Commission. Ms. Dorothy Wallace, from the Mayor's Office. Sammy Smith, from the Sanitation Department of Public Works. Ms. Terry Kuhn, from West Memphis Utility Commission. We also have Derek Clay, from the Fire Department. We have Janet Wumble, from Data Processing, and she's not here today. All right. Awesome. Okay. So, let me go ahead and just talk about each individual. It won't take long, but we're gonna start out with a little snippet for Ms. Debbie Holmes. And y'all have to bear with me, y'all know I can barely see. Okay. This person said, "I would like to nominate Ms. Debbie Holmes of the Fire Department." She helps those individuals from the Fire Department. She takes care of business, and she tracks them and their families. She's like a second mother. She works very hard to get things done for those individuals, and she has the respect of the team. So, Ms. Debbie Holmes. Ms. Trishana Lark, of course, is a member of the Human Resources Department. She is a silent leader. She works hard in the background to promote the city of West Memphis. She serves on the Board of Directors for the Good Neighbor Center Food Bank, and she also is a current participant in the Crettonton Leadership Academy. And, of course, she is, she does an excellent job with these employees with the city. Okay? Ms. Patricia Roberts has worked with the Fire Department since 1993. She has 29 years of fire service, and she has gained the respect of the team in working her way up through the ranks as well, too. She's dedicated, she works hard, and she loves her employee family. Michael Lamb, senior. He has over 30 years of service with West Memphis Utilities Commission. He is a team player. He is hardworking, and he works well with other employees and makes sure that they have what they need to get the job done. Ms. Kamara Johnson, she's with the Police Department. Ms. Johnson is willing to assist everyone. She's considerate of others and the work environment and strives daily to work with the department. She's a team player. She loves her job and takes pride in doing, in excelling. She's very passionate about what she does and works to continuously gain more knowledge about her position. She also recently just helped win an award for having the project, the perfect IT score for ACIC. So, that's awesome. Mm-hmm. And she's the head dispatcher and terminal agency coordinator. So, excellent job. Jason Kennedy has been with the Police Department for, or since 2011. Lieutenant Kennedy has been over the Communications Division. He has gone to great lengths to ensure dispatching is easy for all of those workers. He works nonstop to accommodate the team so that they are better, that they are able to, they're more equipped to fulfill their job duties. He has worked through many issues to ensure that the work environment is safe and prosperous. He has corrected many issues and made great advances to improve those. The team really appreciates him for all that he does, and he's also acknowledged by his supervisor, and he's gained the respect of his team. Maria Adams has been with the West Memphis Utility Commission since 1999, 27 years of service, and she serves as the Meter Superintendent. Maria Adams goes above and beyond her scope of work. One of her first employees on site, she's one of the first employees on site each and every morning. She looks out for the company's best interests overall, and she strives to do the best job that she can and to impact the entire West Memphis Utility Commission. Ms. Dorothy Wallace is not here. However, I'll read an excerpt for hers. She's been with the city of West Memphis since 1976. So, she's been with the department, well, with the city for 46 years. Awesome. This candidate nominated her stating, and she actually had several nominations, but Ms. Dorothy Wallace for Employee of the Year. She is always looking after the Mayor's Office and directing phone calls, organizing, and making sure that the mayor has what he needs to have to fulfill his duties. She has looked after many mayors over the years and has continued to deserve recognition. So, in her absence. Mr. Sammy Smith.
Yes.
Has worked for 16 years with the Public Works Department.
Yes.
Mr. Smith, this person says that they have seen you go above and beyond to keep the city clean. They have seen you go, to you barely being able to walk and working through some of those challenges, but you're still able to give the best service that you can to the city of West Memphis. So, thank you. Ms. Terry Kuhn. Ms. Terry Pickering Kuhn, let me get it correct. She is a West Memphis Utilities employee. She's worked in several positions within the Finance Department as well as working in the plant as well, too, and providing administrative support. Ms. Terry takes care of all of the billing and payroll for the plant, and she never complains. She's wonderful to work with, and she keeps, I guess, the electricians in line. I'll just say that. But she, she does an excellent job, and she's willing to go above and beyond the call of duty. So, thank you. Okay. Mr. Clay was also, Derek Clay was also included in this slate as well, too. Someone nominated Mr. Derek Clay, and it just states that they would like to nominate Assistant Chief Derek Clay for Employee of the Year. In January 2021, Derek Clay was promoted to the Assistant Chief's position. Mr. Clay overcame so many obstacles and challenges his first year, and not only did he learn a new position, but he faced many challenges, but hit the ground running. Mr. Clay was not new at his position, was not new at the work of the position, but he definitely has made an impact. So, we have him as well. And then, of course, Janet Wumble. She has been a member, well, she's been a family member for the city of West Memphis since 1986. She's served 36 years, and she currently works in the Data Processing Department, and she makes sure that people are paid, that they have their technical support, and that they have what they need to do their job. So, in her absence, let's give a round of applause for her. Okay. Now.
Will you announce? If I'm not there, I mean, all of you, thank you.
Thank you all, too, just for coming out. I mean, it is so important that you know that the job that you are, that you all do every day doesn't go unnoticed. There's a lot that we don't see that you do see. There's a lot that you work with, you know, even dealing with citizens, you know, just hitting the ground running. I mean, it's so much that you do. I mean, even the words that I'm speaking now couldn't convey the level of appreciation that the city has for you. So, again, thank you so much. All right. We have some plaques here for everyone, but I'm gonna go ahead and announce the Employee of the Year. So, can I get a drum roll? The Employee of the Year goes to Ms. Trishana Lark.
If had I known I was gonna win, I would've put on my first lady suit. Thank you to everyone that nominated me, everyone that voted. Everyone up here is well-deserved, put in the years. I've been with the city for almost 10 years now. Started at the Police Department, so transitioning to Human Resources, I've gotten to meet a lot more people from the city. So, it's been a fun transition. Thank y'all for putting up with me. But, um, it's all part of the play. Thank you.
We're just gonna go ahead now and give out these plaques and just take a quick picture, and then we're gonna go ahead and line up the next slate. Yeah. Mm-hmm. They're in line, so you can just go ahead and. Okay. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good job.
Okay. Moving on to Department Leader of the Year. We have, and when I call your name, let's do the same thing, just stand up behind the city council members. We have Todd Peterson, West Memphis Utilities General Manager. Sean Ryan, Facilities Manager. Carrie Facello, Animal Shelter Director. Nicholas Coulter, Communications Director. Ms. Twana Bailey, Community Outreach. Barry Ely, Fire Chief. Mr. Dwayne Rose, Emergency Management. Leaders, y'all been working hard this year. And I'm so, 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 so glad that we can recognize you all. So, I'll go ahead and start with some snippets for you all. And y'all are out of line. What's going on? See the? There we go. You gotta get in line. Okay. We'll start with Mr. Todd Peterson, West Memphis Utilities General Manager. He's been with the city. He just hit his 20-year anniversary mark. He's also worked his way through the ranks, and now he's the General Manager. So, the person that nominated him, they stated that Mr. Peterson has worked his way through the ranks, and they respect him for the work that he does. He has also ensured that the utilities of the citizens of West Memphis, the needs of the citizens were met. Through the storms, through the rain, he has been able to organize those needs for the citizens of West Memphis. He is an advocate of ensuring that his employees are informed, they are trained, and they are ready to assist the community in every aspect. So, thank you. Mr. Sean Ryan, Facilities Manager. And he worked for many years with the West Memphis Utilities Commission as a senior mechanic. However, now he's playing several roles in meeting the needs of the city. He's worked for the city since 2009, so he's been with the city for 13 years, and he has been running multiple shops, so both the utility shop as well as the city shop. And he covers, excuse me, and he entails over 400 pieces of equipment that he is in charge of. So, thank you for the work that you do, Mr. Sean.
At the Utilities in between, I've been there 20 years.
20 years, okay. So, for 20 years.
My brother's been there 13.
Okay. You shouldn't have a twin. Oh, my goodness. Thank you for the correction. Okay. Ms. Carrie Facello, you actually received multiple nominations. You've been with the city of West Memphis for nine years since 2013, and here are some snippets from both nominations. I just think that she deals with so much, and she's had so many animals this year, and she is still out there doing the best to provide homes for those animals. And then the other snippet was, "In the face of severe overcrowding and lack of room, she continues to lead her employees and volunteers in housing and caring for endless stray dogs and cats. I don't know another position with as much..." a verified Twitter account with 484 followers, and a Snap, and a Snapchat account. To say we have a strong following on the internet is an understatement. Nick has capitalized the city of West Memphis into the 21st century and has shined a bright light on the city like never before. Thank you, Nick. Ms. Tawana Bailey is our Community Outreach Director. She's been with the city since 2018, so she's been with the city for four years, and she also plays multiple roles. Ms. Tawana Bailey is the Department Head, was previously the Employee of the Year. She goes above and beyond her duties to accomplish what she needs to for the community. She always greets you with a smile, and she is, she has a bubbly attitude and works hard to meet, and works hard to meet the goals of the city. Thank you, ma'am.
Great job, great job.
Chief Ely. Okay. I'm not gonna go into all of this.
I know, that's true. We'll be here till tomorrow.
So this person says, I would like to nominate Barry Ely for Department Head of the Year. Chief Ely was appointed by, appointed Fire Chief in 2021. When he came into the office, he inherited a department that, that needed to monitor spending. He has overturned some of those issues and some of the major problems. He has addressed firefighter pay and tried to make the fire departments pay competitive with other agencies and departments, and he's faced many obstacles, but he's overcome those. Mr. Dwayne Rose has been with the city since 2000, so he's been with the city for two, 22 years. He originally was with the Fire Department, worked his way all the way up through the ranks to interim chief. He has worked, he's worked, excuse me. Mr. Rose currently serves now as the Emergency Management Director and has done an excellent job informing employees of the matters of emergency management. He was also a recent graduate of the Arkansas Leadership Academy, sponsored through the Arkansas State Chamber of Commerce. He goes above and beyond his call of duty and is willing and very responsive to help in any way that he can.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
He also finds us money, too.
So, with these leaders, I just wanna, can we just stand for these leaders? I mean, I just, I don't even know.
I know she's gonna kill me, but Ms. Janice also got nominated, and she needs to get her recognition also. She deserves it like everybody else.
And she's well-deserved. Well-deserved.
But, I mean, I think this last year, you know, it, we, I'm not gonna hold you all any longer. Okay? So, without further ado, we'll do a drum roll. The Department Leader of the Year is Barry Ely.
All right. All right.
Thank you. Wow. I wasn't really expecting this. I am honored to have been selected to be this recipient of this award. But let me be clear. This could not have been poss, been possible without the men and women that are on my That through a collaborative effort have stood shoulder to shoulder with me, have supported me. Let's just take a moment and have them stand up and give them a round of applause. I believe the essence of great leadership is getting smart people around you. Sometimes smarter than you. And being willing to listen to wise counsel. That has been the nucleus to this administration's success. Thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna be right over here.
He's taking the photo. Take the photo, Nate.
We're gonna give him a good selfie.
On three, and I'm not gonna get it. One, two, three. Beautiful.
That's all I have, Mayor McClendon.
Thank you.
Great job, great job.
Once again, we definitely wanna thank our city's family members for doing an outstanding job for the city of West Memphis.
Y'all make our mayor look real good.
We're gonna move down to announcements. I just want to say something about the rhythm and rips, uh, barbecue cooking contest that we just did this past weekend. It was a great success. I commend all the city employees that was involved, just bless all the citizens of West Memphis, far and near, they've done a wonderful job. Food was real good, from what the judges had said, so I just wanna commend them for doing a great job. Ms. Kim Hamilton, Jim Jackson, the whole staff. So, thank them. Was there any other announcements? All right, we have one citizen request, Ms. Waquisha Tubbsen.
She's not here.
I don't see her, but I guess, uh, oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, first time. How you doing, Ms. Tubbs? Basically, how we do this process, you all present your application. We do have it, and then we'll make, the council will make the decision on the next council meeting in two weeks. But if you wanna give us a little information about your business and you all, where you're from, your name and address.
Okay, I'm Waquisha Tubbs, and...
I'm William Tubbs.
So we're citizens of West Memphis, of course, and we are interested, starting a, um, um, non-emergency medical transportation where we're subcontracting with Southeast Trans. So that's what we're doing. And it's actually my husband.
Mr. Tubbs? All right. Was there any questions that you didn't wanna ask?
Just curious, you say you're being sponsored by, so they'll furnish you the equipment, everything that you need, you're just gonna be able to, as far as your services go, is it strictly eight to five, five days a week?
Yeah. Oh, yes, it'll be, I'm sorry, five days a week, Monday through Friday, and being, we'll want to work with dialysis patients as well, so we'll start a bit early at 5:00 a.m., and we'll close at 5:00 p.m.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you all. Come back in two weeks on this council meeting, and the council will vote to approve it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. You said dialysis patients, so if they get off a little late, y'all stay and bring them back?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything that needed to come before the council, before we adjourn? Oh, yeah, definitely. I want everyone to get out, demonstrate and express their constitutional right to vote. Early voting is going on right now, currently at First Baptist, uh, Missouri, on Missouri Street. And don't forget about Election Day, which is November the 8th. The times right now is from 8:00 to 6:00 every day, up until the 7th, except on Sundays. And on Election Day, we'll be at your location, your vote and poll location, from 7:30 to 7:30. So I advise everyone to get out and please vote.
And also, next Friday, not this Friday coming, we will be, having the second Veteran Parade in the city of West Memphis as well. If you're interested in participating, you can contact, contact the Chamber of Commerce and get on the list if you're interested in participating.
All right. If there is, there is nothing, can I get a motion and signature?
No, no.
All right. Bye-bye. Appose.